Everybody is in.
And on, okay. Good evening, Cold Spring. Nice to see everyone. We have a presentation tonight and then a whole bunch of housekeeping. So the first half of our meeting is going to be much more interesting than the second half. But hopefully you'll decide to stick around. The way we're going to roll out this meeting is that we'll have the presentation first, the workshop presentation. By Granicus, Kester Bonsu is the representative who's joining us this evening. Granicus is a software that enables the identification, management, and helps in the regulation of short-term rentals. And we think that it's a very helpful opportunity for the village in terms of technological advance to professionalize regulation. So we're going to hear a bit about that. We'll have a public comment period on that primary topic. And Phil, if you could mute yourself, that would be great. I'll have a public comment. And in that period, you comment on. Phil, are you finding a mute? There we go. Thank you. Or you were muted. Now you're off again. Back to Zoom, the perils of Zoom.
I don't know how to fix this.
What are you on Zoom?
Yeah. Okay, help me out here, guys. Well, it's just not.
So fill in the box with your name on it. Go up to the button with three blue dots. Click on it and it should drop down a mute option. There you go. You got it. Okay, so we'll have like a public comment period on Kester's presentation and any other topics that are open on the agenda. And then we'll move on to our business of the meeting. So Kester, welcome. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you for being a diligent communicator with us as we sorted out what we would be doing next. This board has felt that this software is a sufficient advancement for the village that we in our budgeting process have set aside funds to purchase this. So Kester's going to tell us about what we're getting, what bang we're getting for our buck. Welcome to Cold Spring. And you're muted. Got one muted, one not muted.
You're still muted.
There's a little blue box. There we go. Thanks. I'm going to mute myself now.
Thank you. I want to thank you all for taking the time to meet with me today to learn a little bit more about host compliance and the role of host compliance in driving appropriate short-term rental compliance. Let me share my screen. Over, over the course of the last few years, short-term rentals have become a more prevalent part of a lot of communities experiences when it comes to accommodating travelers. Where it starts to become a somewhat problematic issue for a lot of the communities that we work with at host compliance is that the growth isn't met by regulation, which can run into a number of issues for long-term or permanent residents of the community. What we've been able to find based on some of our data is that about 10% of individuals will voluntarily comply with a short-term rental ordinance, which typically leads to incidences of, let's say, community friction that tends to develop. The short-term rental space is growing kind of exponentially at a rate of about 15x from its inception in 2011. And this is across global markets, but where a lot of local communities are starting to feel it has occurred after COVID initially took place. In that transitional period, what we noticed from our observed data is that hotel occupancy declined sharply. But while we were expecting short-term rental occupancy to decline, we actually saw an increase. So a lot of communities that weren't exactly prepared for the growth of short-term rentals were experiencing a number of units appearing in their communities and leading to a couple of issues. Not to vilify anyone that operates short-term rentals because they do provide a valuable asset to the community and encourage tourism and travel. But making sure that that's appropriately managed. Because without that appropriate management, it tends to lead to financial losses for cities managing the growth of the short-term rental units or the time devoted towards manual regulation, whether that be police or planning time. Diminished neighborhood characters as in complaints around the actions of poor short-term rental guests or hosts. And for some communities, even an impact on housing affordability with individual investors realizing that they can make 20 to 30% more revenue by opening a short-term rental as opposed to a long-term rental. In the city of Cold Spring, you've recently made steps towards better interactions with the short-term rental community, but the idea is still around trying to generate maximum amount of individuals making themselves available and compliant with the existing community rules. And that's kind of where host compliance fits in. Through our suite of products, what we mean to address are the most common issues that occur on from either a resident or a city management perspective when it comes to short-term rentals. One of the most time-consuming efforts for communities when it comes to short-term rentals is just the identification. Having multiple platforms from Airbnb to VRBO representing available short-term rentals in the community makes it pretty unreasonable to expect you to have a complete understanding of what's taking place in your community, specifically when a lot of these services are not geared towards supporting local regulatory efforts. In our last scan of Cold Spring, we actually came across 35 active units that were currently listing inside of the property, I'm sorry, inside of the community. And that just being a snapshot of the units that were available at the time, we tend to see annual fluctuations depending on seasonality. But with the more units that come online, the increased amount of time and difficulty that comes with identifying the active units. So on Cold Springs behalf, address identification can step in to create a place where each individual unit can be tracked as it comes online. You can become aware of new units that have recently come online, giving them an opportunity to understand the rule set and join your compliance structure. What we found is for the majority of residents, the reason that they do not comply with an existing short-term rental regulation is that they don't know about it or understand how to follow it. So first and foremost, the issue is going to be finding individuals that are participating in short-term rental leasing, having an understanding of where they're located, and then being able to move on towards other services like our compliance monitoring tool where you can directly manage mailing or communication with the short-term rental hosts active in your community. Layering on top of compliance monitoring, moving towards a permitting and registration gives you an ability to simplify your engagement with onboarding individuals into your compliance structure. But I think where Cold Spring may have some of the highest value that hasn't been explored to this point would be with another one of our modules. And that would be in the 24/7 hotline. Because what we want to do is try to reduce that community friction. And we found that giving residents a place where they can accurately report incidences that have taken place involving short-term rentals, asking them for an example or to submit proof along with that, and then giving them the ability to have their calls to try and seek out a resolution and communicate with the resident that filed the complaint makes it a lot easier for residents to deal with what might be the growth of what can sometimes feel like an intrusive party in the community. Now, this is a system that's actually already been adopted at the county level when it comes to addressing the growth and impact of short-term rentals on your community. And we actually started working with a number of clients inside of the New York area when it comes to also addressing their short-term rental compliance needs. Now, that is a fairly basic overview of the goals and impacts of short-term rental, I'm sorry, host compliance in regards to short-term rentals. I always feel like I function better in a perspective where I can kind of answer available questions. So kind of expanding from that perspective. Are there any questions, comments, concerns from members of the board or community?
I just wanted a clarification. When you say it's been adopted at the county level, has it been adopted by Putnam County?
I apologize. I'm sorry. I apologize. I meant to refer to Duchess County.
Okay, okay. And I think that we've seen great results in Duchess. Are there questions, other questions from board members? And we should also make sure to recognize trustees Starbuck and Fatty was, it was those trustees who brought this forward to the board as a concept. And I think that it's going to serve us well. Questions from board members at this point? Can't see tweets. Doesn't look like it.
Kester, I have one. In our, when I met with you, you explained in a little bit more detail how how you identify addresses through us. Can you explain that for the rest of the board members?
Certainly, certainly. I apologize if I didn't go in depth with that. I always, I fight between going too in detail and not going to enough detail, and I apologize if that wasn't detailed. When it comes to address identification, what we're going to do is crawl multiple short-term rental listing sites. After we've had the ability to find all of the available listings in your community, we want to attribute them to the appropriate addresses that are active in the community. Then layer on some parcel information around the ownership of that address. So basically, taking all of your advertisements and attaching them to a physical address along with some background information, then having that verified by an individual. That's what is going to generate your dashboard of active short-term rentals that will be regularly updated to ensure that everyone that's currently active is being captured. And over the course of a year, you're capturing the aggregate of everyone who has participated in that short-term rental system. And to go a little bit deeper, we can also get an understanding of some of the general metrics or the data tied to your short-term rentals, whether that be the properties that are listed by owner, I'm sorry, that are owner occupied at the time of listing, properties that are listed as vacant, and an understanding of whether or not these individual units are compliant with your existing zoning practices as well. If you'd like to layer that into the mappings service. And just to go a little bit deeper, each of those dots represent an individual unit level where you'll be able to drop down and get a better understanding of is the unit currently active, identified, compliant, the multiple websites where they're listed, the individual listing information, and a timeline of activities for changes that have occurred to the individual property listing, including documented stays to better aggregate the activity taking place at an individual short-term rental. Would you like me to elaborate a little bit more? I can go a little bit more, but that's where the too much.
That was great.
That's some, that's a tremendous advantage over where we are now, which is a very manual. Sorry, getting feedback. It is a very manual process. We have found that properties are listed without addresses. So how are you, how are you? I don't know if everyone else is, how are you, how are you, I don't know if everyone else is ready yet.
Bill, can you mute yourself again, please? Bill, can you mute yourself again, please?
Oh, yes, I'm muted.
Thank you, thank you. So how do you overcome, how does the software overcome that hurdle, Kester?
That is one of the largest time consumers for any individual government, which is why we started to build that as the cornerstone of the address identification. The way in which we identify properties, it's primarily going to be based on the AI at first. When we're scanning the active short-term rentals, let's say a home was available for sale on Zillow in 2021. Our AI will say, I think this property on Zillow at this address is the same property that you're seeing on Airbnb. When we pair those two together as a partial match, we have our human analysts try to step in and find additional data points to draw a conclusion on whether or not we've appropriately identified the proper, the correct property. And for a number of our clients, they do use our short-term rental matches, the evidence that we use to base each match as their basis for potentially revoking or what, revoking permits or dealing with individuals who may flat out, which sometimes happens, deny that they're even operating a short-term rental.
It's incredibly valuable, huge step ahead. Do other trustees have questions or comments at this point? Could you talk with us, Kester, about the the price structure and tell us about, again, value for our buck? That because this has become so staff-intensive, you know, we're dumping quite a lot into staff hours in a manual format. So what is the structure of a contract with Granicus? And how does that play out over a year?
Certainly. The price is fixed for the year. It's going to be based on the number of units that we identified in your initial search. Now, there's a great opportunity for savings there because for the majority of communities that we work with, their peak, well, outside of the Colorado ski towns, the peak of travel for a lot of these communities comes down to summer. So right now, you've currently been quoted for your available number of active short-term units because we do base the pricing either on the unit or advertisement listing count tied to the units when we're structuring out the pricing. So in the next year, there may be a fluctuation in the number of available units. That's going to be averaged out as a consideration for the number of active units and also a consideration of your initial base starting price. So I I hate being salesy salesman, but that's why I always recommend, hey, if we have a low unit or relatively low compared to your seasonal peaks and lows, then it typically makes sense to advance at that point. Because you're getting the greatest value for your money when it comes to identifying the most number of units for the lowest cost. That might have been a little too honest or too inside baseball, but I'm just giving it up.
Appreciate it. I actually do not have the contract in front of me. Do one of you have the contract in front of you to apply dollar amounts for the benefit of the public? I think unless you have it, Kester.
Yes, I do have it, but I just want to make sure because I okay.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
Okay, so the address identification annual was 2,500, the 24-hour hotline is 600. If we added compliance monitoring, it is 1,200. So the total was $4,300.
Thank you. And of course, that would be balanced against permitting fees, et cetera.
And typically, I just always recommend the 24-hour hotline because I'm like, it's incredibly difficult to find someone who will work for $600 a year, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So that's usually a great efficiency generator.
Well, if there are no other questions from board members, I'd like to open the conversation to questions from the public. Any questions for Kester?
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
Am I? Okay, is the volume sufficient?
I can hear you.
Yes. Oh, great. It seems like this may be a little premature in that it's awfully expensive and somewhat offensive in that it is employing artificial intelligence to survey our community. I'm not sure whether or not Kester and his company could track the number of occupancies, the amount of financial transactions. A lot of things that really aren't legal. And so I bring this up early on in the discussion so that we're all well-prepared for this kind of criticism. That's all I'll say at this point. I think that that's a fair point where you might feel like it's intrusive. But when it comes to interactions between, let's say, short-term rental provider and your community, if I were to open up, let's say, four by 32 120 room or 200-room hotel in your community, but I told you I refuse to get permitting and I will never pay you taxes, that would be completely unreasonable. But when you start to look at the population of short-term rentals that may be active in your community and you start to extrapolate those numbers out, you're dealing with a very similar situation. You're dealing with a commercial interest that's active in the community and generating revenue, but not necessarily complying with any regulation that you would apply to a business doing the same, well, manner of business. What we want to do is close that visibility gap because a number of these short-term rental providers are less than excited to help cities manage their own internal compliance, which is what comes down to one of the major time savers for address identification. The fact that most of these organizations that are operating in your community won't even give you the address of the of the units that they have active in your community that are generating revenue. What we want to do is clear that gap, give you total visibility into what's happening at your community, in your community, and allow this system to support you in managing the policies and procedures that you'd like to see any business in this particular field abide by.
I think what Kester has brought up is entirely fair. It's in Cold Spring, we have, you've identified at least 35. We have at different times identified more. And when the option to obtain permits was put forward for folks to step forward. So it is an issue, Phil, and it's a current, it's a current issue very much so.
Can I also just chime in, Kester, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the information that you're gathering is all public information, correct? It's not like you're doing deep dive FBI searches into people's homes and locations, right? So this is not, while it may seem sort of big brother-y, it's all information that anyone could in theory, if they wanted to do the the work, could find this information about the homes that are being used as SCRs. Is that correct?
Yeah, what we find is that the majority of code compliance officers are doing it manually where they're looking for properties that they might recognize on Airbnb and then physically driving around to match it to the property. What our AI does is just save all of that time and effort and consolidate it into regularly updated reports. So it's not someone constantly searching Airbnb themselves and then trying to create those physical matches on a regular basis.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from the board or the public?
Yes. I would simply like to respond to his response. His software was devised for New York City, for major metropolitan areas, for places that are not the scale and size of Cold Spring. Our primary concern is from my viewpoint, is that we do not create an environment in Cold Spring for private equity, purchasing single-family homes for transference into unlicensed hotels, shall we say. What we do have, however, is a very compliant community here. That is, most people are interested in gathering additional income from their homes. Not LLCs or, and that quite often is just done for protective purposes, so that private equity, hedge funds, people that are now currently buying up mobile home parks, individual houses in larger areas, apartments leases in New York City, et cetera. Yes, yes, it's hard to track all that. We are not that. And our primary threats to our community are going to be institutional investors trying to transform the real estate market. That is not what we have here. As far as I know, we have had zero activity of hedge funds coming into this community and buying up houses. I could be wrong, but the fact is, that's the threat. Not home-occupied residences or multifamily apartments, three or under, that are doing this for intense personal gain. So at any rate, I'm just, I'm not saying this is a bad product. But I believe we have not really experienced under a open permitting program as opposed to the draconian one that was proposed by the previous board. That has never been tried. Just tell everybody permit if you want to do business. And if you're an outside investor that's trying to, you know, set up a aggregate, you're going to be out of luck.
One more minute.
No, I'm done. That's it.
Certainly. What I've seen is when it comes to private investors purchasing properties and operating, it really requires that you understand who they are and where they're locating, where they're operating. For some of the clients that I work with that are at a small scale, it actually, okay, allow me to kind of back this up. Our solution scales. Do we have Nashville, Tennessee as a client? Yes. But do we work with communities that have 10, 15 short-term rentals and they're looking to have, be able to track that population because they have a limited housing supply? And as those investors move in, it hurts who can live and work in the community. In order to make that type of distinction about the impact that short-term rentals are having on your community, it typically requires an oversight of how many active units do we have versus what is our active housing population? How many homes are we building against our active population? Understanding where that goes requires transparency that you cannot get. Well, a lot of these companies will not give you. So the idea is to cut through any type of smokescreen that might be occurring and give you some understanding in visibility into the actual housing situation in your community. What we saw over the post-COVID period was actually a reverse migration. Instead of people from rural areas or less densely populated areas going towards major cities, we watched the complete reversal. We started watching people from densely populated cities start consuming that limited housing supply because you can live and work from anywhere. Tracking the impact of those actions and these trend changes just requires that transparency and visibility. So the question from that perspective really becomes without software to simplify that process, how much time and effort are you willing to input into gaining that understanding? And as far as kind of an open permitting system, I apologize, I think I have the wrong window open. Here we are. That builds back to the point that we spoke about in the beginning. That builds back to the point that we spoke about in the beginning, which is that ten percent voluntary compliance rate, which is, I believe, close to the current status, which is, that's how many people tend to show up by choice. And then it becomes the responsibility of the local government to clear that delta from ten to a hundred percent. So we're just here to make that clearing the jump easier. I hope that appropriately answers where we're trying, what we're trying to accomplish with this bill.
It does, and it also addresses one of the, one of several criticisms about the existing law that is on the books, that it was, the law was built and structured without solid data. And this, this is a base as we look to modify that local law and improve the local law. It's a, it's a data set to work from that is, that is a neutral data set and very helpful. We've hit the half-hour mark. Kester has been incredibly helpful. I'm really pleased that you were able to join us for a public conversation. The next steps are for us to have a vote on acquiring the software. We've come to agreement on that. And we are preparing a draft of revisions to put forward to the public in public hearing of our local law. And we hope to do that in the next few weeks. You're welcome to stay for the business portion of our meeting, Kester, but I don't imagine it will be all that exciting to you. Thank you for joining us, and Catherine and Eliza will be following up this primary context.
I appreciate all of the time that you were able to give me, and I will stop rambling and running into your, and running into your meetings time. Thank you very much, and I look forward to hearing from you.
Talk to you soon. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Kester.
Okay, now we'll shift into the business portion. Item one is the opportunity to request to vote to add or modify agenda items. I have one change. I'd like, just for the flow of meeting, to flip items nine and ten. Any others? Okay, if everyone's cool with that. Announcements. I think I mentioned that trustee Certo is not well again this evening, so we're sorry that he's not with us. He did prepare a statement on the budget, which I'll read when we get to that portion. Tomorrow is yard waste pickup, the second yard waste pickup officially with Royal. Your yard waste should be in paper bins, only paper bags. If it's not in paper bags, it's not going to be picked up, meaning if it's in plastic bags or anything else, it will not be. If you have sticks, they ask us to attempt to bind them in two-foot lengths, as close to two-foot lengths as you can get. I will also post on our website and social media, folks had questions last week about why Royal was picking up yard waste and garbage on the same day, and in fact, with the same truck. And Village Hall had the same reaction, a lot of the members of the public did, saying, what is happening? We can't possibly be taking care of yard waste and composting if we're putting it in with garbage. So I did ask for photographs from Royal, and I will share them out. They're trying to reduce the number of trucks that are on the street in the village at the same time or on multiple days. And so they are putting it all into one box. And we have photographs of them lifting out the yard waste with heavy equipment and separating it out to the side, and it is then being composted. So I'll make sure we share those out to address people's concerns. On garbage, we had a delivery on Saturday. I think that we have wrapped up most of the size swaps. We have wrapped up most of the non-deliveries. There are a few left for this weekend. If you do have swaps to make, or, yeah, if you have swaps to make, please make sure that the bins you have are put out at the curb on Friday night for them to come around on Saturday and finish that off. And then hopefully, this will be it. I'm sure there will be trailing small issues to deal with going forward, but we're past the, we're past the bulk of the transfer. And thank you, everyone, for your patience. Okay, moving on to the resolutions related to the budget. This is gonna be a lot of reading. I just need to, if someone else would be willing to move Resolution Eight, twenty-twenty-two, I will pull up the statement from trustee Certo to read before we vote. Would someone be willing to make, to read Resolution Eight into the record, please?
Sure, I can do that. Okay, Resolution Zero-Eight, two thousand twenty-two, general fund budget. A resolution adopting general fund budget for the fiscal year commencing on June first, twenty-twenty-two, ending on May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, making appropriations for the conduct of the Village of Cold Spring government and establishing the rates of compensation for officers and employees for such period. The following resolution was offered by, I guess, myself, Tweeps Woods, for adoption and seconded by
Second.
by trustee Fatty. To wit, whereas the board has met at the time and place specified in the notice of public hearing on the tentative general fund budget and heard all persons desiring to be heard thereon, now therefore be resolved that the tentative general fund budget as amended and revised and as hereafter set forth in the amount of two million eight hundred forty-six thousand five hundred thirty-eight is hereby adopted and that the several amounts stated in the column titled tentative in the tentative general fund budget, but hereafter referred to as adopted in Schedule A are hereby appropriated for the objects and purposes specified and the salaries and wages stated in the salary schedule for the tentative general fund budget shall be and are hereby fixed at the amounts shown therein effective Wednesday, April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two. And further be it resolved that the tentative fireman service awards tax levy as amended and revised as here and hereafter set forth in the amount of thirty-five thousand is hereby adopted and the amounts stated are hereby appropriated for the object and purpose specified and are hereby fixed at this amount shown therein effective Wednesday, April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two.
There is a roll call. Unless you want me to...
This is a, this is a roll call vote. Jeff, are you with us? Jeff is multitasking this evening, so trustee Certo is absent.
Did you want to read Joe's statement?
I, sure, I can do that. And I was going to read it at the end, but if you would prefer that it be read now, I see that clerk.
Yeah, the comment should be made before roll.
Okay. So, two mayor Foley and members of the boards of trustees dated today. As we discussed, I want to apologize for not being able to attend tonight's workshop as my health issue isn't conducive to the public arena. I realize I cannot vote on any items without formally being present, but I wanted to reiterate my support for Agenda Item Five, Resolutions Eight, Nine, and Ten regarding the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three budgets. We started the budget process informally in late January, approximately six weeks after taking office. The initial maximum legal tax rate cap was approximately five percent as given by New York State. I typically reference the tax rate as that's what I believe most people discuss at the kitchen table. Through a very thorough and transparent process, there was much give and take among staff, our board, and the public. We were able to bring the tax rate down to approximately one point eight percent for the general fund, and that is what we're hopefully, you're hopefully adopting tonight. I'm proud of this budget and everyone who's helped to make it happen. We addressed our goals and made a significant pledge toward our staff and the village's infrastructure, both monetarily and in principle. Well done, colleagues, and starting tomorrow, we can begin thinking about the following year's budget. Yours truly, Joe.
Trustee Fatty?
Yes.
Trustee Starbuck? Trustee Woods?
Yes.
And Mayor Foley?
I vote aye.
Okay, Resolution Oh-Eight of twenty-twenty-two is officially adopted on this date by a vote of four-zero with one abstention. One absence, I'm sorry.
Okay, Resolution Nine. How about if someone else besides me and Tweeps, just to get some...
I'll take a stab at it. Resolution Zero-Nine, twenty-twenty-two, waterfront budget. A resolution adopting waterfront budget for the fiscal year commencing on June first, twenty-twenty-two and ending on May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, making appropriations for the conduct of the Village of Cold Spring government and establishing rates of compensation for officers and employees for such period. The following resolution was offered by Catherine Fatty and adopted and seconded by
I'll second.
trustee Starbuck. To wit, excuse me. Whereas this board has met at the time and place specified in the notice of public hearing on the tentative waterfront budget and here heard all persons desiring to be heard thereon, now therefore be it resolved that the tentative waterfront budget is herein after set forth in the amount of eight hundred and thirty-six thousand one hundred and seventy-one dollars is hereby adopted and that the several amounts stated in the column titled tentative in the appropriated did I skip one? For the objects and purposes specified and the salaries, oh, skip the line. Tentative in the, good lord, I need new glasses, in tentative waterfront budget be therefore referred to as the adopted in Schedule F are hereby appropriated for the objects and purposes specified and the salaries and wages stated in the salary schedule of the tentative waterfront budget shall be and are hereby fixed at the amount shown therein effective Wednesday, April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two. Unroll call vote to you, Jeff.
Okay, trustee Fatty?
I vote aye.
Trustee Starbuck?
Aye.
Trustee Woods?
Aye.
And Mayor Foley?
Aye.
This resolution is officially adopted on this date by a vote of four-zero with one absence.
Okay, Eliza, would you like to take the last one?
The sewer fund?
Yep, number ten, ten, twenty-twenty-two.
Sure. Resolution Ten, twenty-twenty-two, sewer fund budget. A resolution adopting a sewer fund budget for the fiscal year commencing on June first, twenty-twenty-two and ending on May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three, making appropriations for the conduct of the Village of Cold Spring government and establishing the rates of compensation for officers and employees for such period. The following resolution was offered by Eliza Starbuck for, or adoption, I think it's supposed to be for adoption.
For adoption, thank you. I'll fix that.
Bye, anyone?
Second.
Thank you, Catherine Fatty, to wit. Whereas this board has met at the time and place specified in the notice of public hearing on the tentative sewer fund budget and heard all persons desiring to be heard thereon, now therefore be it resolved that the tentative sewer fund budget as herein after set forth in the amount of six hundred nine seven hundred fifty-nine, six hundred nine thousand seven hundred fifty-nine is hereby adopted and that the several amounts stated in the column titled tentative in the tentative sewer fund budget, but hereafter referred to as adopted in Schedule G are hereby appropriated for the objects and purposes specified and the salaries and wages stated in the salary schedule of the tentative sewer fund budget shall be and are hereby fixed at the amounts shown therein effective Tuesday, April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-two. Unroll call vote, Jeff.
Okay, trustee Fatty?
Aye.
Trustee Starbuck?
Aye.
Trustee Woods?
Aye.
And Mayor Foley?
Aye.
Resolution is officially adopted on this date by a vote of four-zero with one absence.
Excellent. Thank you, everyone. Glad that's done. Tomorrow, we start talking about next year. Okay. Item six is in four parts. It's requesting the trustees' authorization to sign some agreements. First, I'm pleased to see that the Film Society has tentative dates for the summer at Dockside. The space will be restricted to what is open to the public now, roughly. But we're hoping that states is able to make good progress, the state is able to make good progress and open more space. For now, the dates put forward are June twenty-fifth and rain dates the following day, June twenty-fifth, July ninth, July twenty-third, August sixth, and August twentieth. And they will finalize those with the state and with us. And so the village provides liability insurance for the Film Society. And this is a memorandum of understanding. Jeff, does this need to be read and fall into the record?
Now just voted on.
Okay.
Now just voted on.
Okay, it is available on the website in full rather than...
It's available on the website in full.
Phil, could you meet yourself again, please? Thanks. Okay, so I make a motion to, oh, no, I can't, you're authorizing me. Someone authorize me.
A motion to authorize Mayor Foley to approve contractors, a memorandum of understanding with the Cold Spring Film Society.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks. The next is an intermunicipal agreement for code enforcement services. Again, Charlotte Mountain, our, the village's code enforcement officer took a full-time supervisory position in Newburgh. And while we reorganize and consider our next steps, the town has agreed to cover the village for code enforcement and fire inspections, et cetera. This was before the town board on April twentieth, I believe. Yes, April twentieth. It was approved by them. So far, we have been... Greg has been covering open new applications, and it seems to be proceeding smoothly. This is a month-by-month basis to sort of buy us some cushion time to make good choices. And it is not, it is not a permanent intermunicipal agreement at this stage. Any discussion? Okay, would someone make the motion authorizing me to sign, please?
I'll make the motion for Mayor Foley to sign the intermunicipal agreement for code enforcement services with the town of Phillips Town.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. The next is Munistat, which is the agency that advises us for bond issuance. It's our annual agreement with them. It's available in full again on the website. With someone, any discussion? Okay, would someone please make a motion to authorize the signature?
I will do it. I will make a motion for Mayor Foley to sign the municipal advisor service agreement with Munistat.
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the last is a contract with EFPR Group. It is, they are the group that provides auditing services to the village, so examine our, all of our financials. May I have a motion to authorize me to sign, please?
Sure, I will make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign. It is, what is this? Is it a agreement?
Engagement, yeah, it's the engagement agreement.
Okay, an engagement agreement with EFPR Group.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks. And again, if anyone in the public wants to read in depth, it's available online. Okay, item seven is approving hiring of Tom Hopper as a part-time laborer at a rate of nineteen dollars an hour. We have engaged Tom to clean the restrooms at the base of Main Street two times on Saturdays and midday on Sunday. This will allow the bathrooms to be opened seven days a week and cleaned seven days a week and twice on the busiest day. He is willing to do that for nineteen dollars an hour, and so I would like to make a motion to hire him at that rate.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now, Resolution Eleven Twenty-Two is approving the parking agreement for Forty Main Street. This was a process that was begun under the previous board. Tweeps and I were on the board at the time and supportive of it at the time. Forty Main Street is a mixed-use development on Lower Main Street. The front portion of the building is retail, the rear portion is office space. There is not the ability to provide parking on Main Street for that development. The planning board, at the time, made recommendations to the village board, this is back in the fall, recognizing the value of the use and the value of the development, expressing willingness to grant required retail waivers for parking on Main Street. One is a grandfathered space, the remaining six need to be purchased in a waiver. It's the way our code is structured. And then they asked, they turned it over to the Board of Trustees and asked... Um, and then they, um, asked, they turned it over to the Board of Trustees and asked the Board of Trustees to negotiate. A parking agreement, um, for the rest of the spaces. Um, it was recommended that we look at the municipal lot at Fair Street and along Mayor's Park. Um, and so data was compared to see what use patterns are, the property owner is requesting parking for, um. Folks who work in the office from Monday to Thursday. Um, throughout the year and our data from the parking meters that are, that were in place, you now have, you now have the phone. Um, based app, looking at the, uh, data from previous parking. Um, it's an underutilized lot in those times, um, and so this, it's, it's a way for the village to. Um, monetize to create revenue on an underutilized space. So, um, the agreement, um. The, the grantee determined that what they need physically are twenty spaces, um, because of some. Office members using public trans transit. Um, the code, section one thirty-four dash eighteen E seven would require thirty-seven spaces for the square footage and the occupancy. Um, in negotiations with this among the trustees, um, with our, assisted by our village attorney and with the property owner. Um, we determined that in order to meet the requirements of that code. Um, it would be sufficient for the property owner to make a payment, an annual payment. A rental of twenty spaces and then pay the standard waiver fee for the remaining seventeen spaces. And what this represents for the village, um, is an increase in revenue of twenty-five, just about twenty-five thousand dollars a year. So that's, that's a significant bump to offset impacts and to benefit from. People working on Main Street and spending on Main Street all day. Um, I thought it was fantastic, um, actually, the, the gentleman who was the chair of the planning board at the time, Matt Francisco is on. Um, it was his board that put forward the initial proposal, and I think it's a really great one, a creative one and an example of fine planning. Any discussion among board members before we move to resolution on this contract, on this agreement? No, we're, okay, so this is another read into the record and it is a roll call vote. Resolution of the Village Board of Trustees of the Village of Cold Spring, author, oh, I can't, someone else needs to do this, it's authorizing me to sign it. I forgot that it's structured that way, thanks, Eliza.
Resolution of the Village Board of Trustees of the Village of Cold Spring, authorizing the mayor to execute a parking easement agreement for forty Main Street. Whereas forty Main Street CSLC, the applicant owns property located at forty Main Street, Cold Spring, New York. With a Putnam County tax map identification number of section four eight point twelve, lot two, block four, the property. Which is located in the village's B one zoning district. And whereas the applicant applied to the Village of Cold Spring Planning Board for site plan approval. To convert the property from a retail use to a mixed use consisting primarily of, uh, office spaces with some retail remaining. And whereas via resolution number eighty-eight dash two thousand twenty-one. The Village of Cold Spring Board of Trustees approved a payment of fees in lieu of providing off-street parking. Resulting from the change of use at forty Main Street and. Whereas pursuant of resolution number eighty-eight, twenty twenty-one as part of potentially granting the parking waiver under section. One thirty-four dash eighteen E seven of the village's zoning code for the thirty-seven. Thirty thirty-seven off-street parking spaces required for the office aspect of the project. The Board of Trustees, Village Board of Trustees would consider a parking easement agreement with the applicant. Where the applicant will agree to pay a per-space fee to the village for use. Of the Fair Street Mayor's Park Municipal Parking Lots during the days on third, Monday through Thursday. And whereas the Village Board of Trustees' decision on potentially applying waiver provision. For the off-street parking spaces related to the proposed office use was contingent on negotiating a parking easement agreement. Between the Village Board of Trustees and the applicant. And whereas the Board of Trustees and the applicant have no negotiated such an agreement, which agreement is attached hereto as exhibit A. And now therefore it is hereby resolved that the Village Board. Hereby authorizes the mayor to execute the parking easement agreement in substantially the same form as the attached agreement. Subject to the review and approval as to form and content by the attorney of the village by order of the Village. Board of Village of Cold Spring, New York, dated. Uh, today, April tw- twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. Um, do I have to keep going?
Roll call, vote, Jeff. Okay, this is, uh, so, um, in the.
Sorry, I was, I was muted, um, before roll call, Eliza put forth the. Um, put this forth, no one second, it's, I need a second.
I'll second.
Thank you. Technicalities.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay, Mayor Foley.
Yes.
Um, Deputy Mayor Woods.
Yes.
Trustee Starbuck.
Hi.
Trustee Fatty.
Yes.
Joe is absent. John does his formats is different than I do, so.
Yes, he does. Um, a couple of other things to note, um, for the benefit of the public, this is not an exclusive agreement. The, the, uh, applicant, the property owner can use these spaces if they are available. Um, this, it is, the public is not excluded from these spaces, there will be, um, placards issued. Um. And this now, the next step is that this goes back to the planning board, I believe they've moved their meeting to the fifth of May, this goes back to the planning board. Um, for consideration as part of their final site plan deliberations. Anything else on that? And then moving to another, another bit of housekeeping that cleans up. Uh, something previously agreed by the last iteration of the village board, um, twenty-nine to thirty-one Rock Street. Um. As part of a settlement of a lawsuit related to the construction of a driveway at that site. Um, the village agreed to sell a small triangle of property to. Um, the owner of twenty-nine to thirty-one Rock Street, Mr. McComish. Um. It was not, the, the board voted to do that, but the paperwork was not moved forward by. The village attorney, so what we're doing now is closing out the paperwork that allows that to happen. And among the pieces, we need to, um, conduct a seeker review. Um, and so we have in front of us, um, part one of the short environmental assessment form. It was completed by our attorney and it's, that's, that's the project description, which, does anyone have any comments or questions on that portion? Okay. Um, and then we move to, um, the impact assessment, and I am going to read these, um, into the public record. Um. It is. I'm going to read them, um, as if the answer is no, um, and if anyone disagrees with the assessment of no to an answer. Please stop me and we'll discuss. Will the proposed, number one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation? No. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? No. And again, this relates particularly to the sale of this triangle of property. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic? Or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walkway? No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy? And it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy con- conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the public, excuse me, will the proposed action impact existing? A, public or private water supplies, or B, public or private wastewater treatment facilities? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, e.g. wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna? No. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No. Any conversation on part two? Um, this is under the, with those findings, um, recommending. Um, Jeff? Are you there, Jeff? He is not. I believe that in moving ahead and reading, I should have first, um. Made a motion to declare the Board of Trustees the lead agency under seeker, so I am making that motion and looking for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and now we have gone through part one, um, and part two. Um. And then for part three, when, when, when in this process, we determine that there is no adverse impact. Um, this is an unlisted action under seeker. Um, so I'm moving things out of order here, it is an unlisted act, I propose that it is an unlisted action, um, and I'm looking for a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now with the negative findings, um, propose that we, um, make a negative declaration of impact. Um, as part of part three, the determination of significance.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. So we have conducted those parts. And now we move on to the resolution that actually authorizes, um, the sale and someone else needs to move that.
Okay. I can do that. Am I mute? No, let me, okay. Um, let's see, this, the resolution of the Village Board of Trustees. Village of Cold Spring, authorizing the mayor to execute a deed pursuant to settlement agreement previously approved by the board. Whereas the Village of Cold Spring and Board of Trustees of the Village of Cold Spring at all was named as defendant. In the lawsuit filed by William P. McComish, Comish, sorry, which is captioned William P. McComish. Versus Al Zalinski et al., United District District Court for Southern District, New York, case number seven. Uh, twenty-one dash C V dash zero zero four nine one. And whereas the Village of Cold Spring and the Board of Trustees of the Village of Cold Spring. Reached a settlement with Mr. McComish. In which the village has agreed to transfer certain real property, particularly the existing parking area, driveway area and other property adjoining land owned by Mr. McComish. In exchange for the amount of six thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents, representing a four dollar per square foot. Among other things, the settlement agreement. And whereas the village approved the execution of the settlement agreement at its village board meeting held on July sixth, twenty twenty-one. The July sixth, twenty twenty-one minutes are attached in exhibit A. And there is the subject land to be conveyed by the village pursuant to the settlement agreement consists of approximately one thousand five hundred sixty-one. Point eight three nine seven square feet hereafter known as the parcel. And whereas the sale of the parcel will limit the village's liability exposure and maintenance responsibilities. And whereas Mr. McComish has offered to purchase the parcel for fair and adequate consideration. Which offer price was at the time of agreement supported by the assessors fair market value. And whereas the village has declared that the parcel has surplus. And is not needed for any municipal use as the parcel is not used for highway purposes and does not serve or is used as. Sewer or water purpose, has no environmental or recreational or parkland component. And is not used for the administration of fire or for police purposes. And whereas the proposed transfer of the parcel is an action subject to the State Environmental Quality Review Act seeker. And the village board has determined that the transfer of the small parcel is an unlisted action for which the village has reviewed and completed a short environmental assessment form pursuant to secret. Now, now therefore it is hereby resolved that the village board declares itself the lead agency with respect to the seeker review of the transfer of the parcel. Since there are no other agencies that have authority to approve the sale and let it be further. Resolve that the Village Board of Trustees hereby issues a negative declaration. For this proposed action under seeker at the, as this sale will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts. And an environmental impact statement is not required. And let it further be resolved that the Village Board of Trustees hereby determines that the transfer of the parcel is pursuant to and in interest of the certain settlement agreement. And resolve that the village board hereby authorizes the mayor to execute any and all required deeds and transfer documents. To effectuate the transfer and the sale of the parcel, including but not limited to the deed and necessary transfer documents. Subject to the review and approval as to form and content, content by the attorney for the village. By order of the village board of. By order of the village board of the Village of Cold Spring, New York, dated April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two.
That's, that's John's strange structure. Yeah, Jeff, do we have you with us for roll call or shall I call a roll? Okay. Um. Deputy Mayor Woods.
Hi.
Trustee Starbuck.
Hi.
Trustee Fatty.
Aye.
Trustee Curdo is absent and I vote aye. The resolution passes four to zero with one absence. Okay, sorry for everyone who had to suffer through that, that was the least smooth. Speaker process of all time. Me messing up the order, so I'm sorry for everyone who had to sit through that. Alright, so that gets that piece of business from last year off the table. Moving on to. New business, not exactly new to this board, your discussion last week, um, the board discussed last week. Um, as a show of, um, concern and support for, um. First, our first responders, um, who are repeatedly addressing rescues on the mountain. Um, to ask Metro North via resolution to keep the. Stop that is at the breakneck trailhead closed. Um, at least through the end of May, um, until more infrastructure is in place to receive crowds there. This is not, um, it's not an action without consequence, um, it does, it does mean that folks are walking. From the Cold Spring Station to the trailhead, they have been since the station was itself shut down. Um, for trail recovery, um, November, more than, more than a year ago in November. Um, I will say that even, even our discussions, um, the town board has passed a similar resolution. And we had discussion last week and out of that has come, um, a meeting on May second. Um, to discuss state staffing for the mountain, so it has done what we hoped it would do. Grabbing attention, um, and buying some time to, to hopefully modify some staffing. Um, this resolution does have, um, the stated support of our fire company and our officer in charge. Um, so with that, I will read it into the record, resolution twelve, twenty twenty-two, being offered by me, Mayor Foley, for adoption and seconded by.
Second.
Set you tweets?
Yes.
Whereas access to breakneck mountain and the attendant hiking trails are located partly in the Village of Cold Spring. And whereas every year, emergency services from the Village of Cold Spring are burdened with providing rescue assistance to persons climbing breakneck mountain and using said hiking trails. And whereas the Hudson Highland Fuhrer Trail will soon be under construction and when completed will provide a safer alternative. For visitors who are unprepared and are unable to safely ascend breakneck mountain and traverse the mountain trails. And whereas the breakneck ridge station on Metro North's railroad Hudson Line is a seasonal train stop used weekends and holidays. This, when it is a significant entry point for hikers traveling to and from breakneck mountain and the local hiking trails. And whereas it would greatly alleviate the anticipated annual strain on the village's emergency services if Metro North Railroad would postpone opening the breakneck ridge train station to the public. Until the Hudson Highland Fuhrer Trail is closer to being operational. Now therefore be it resolved that the Village of Cold Spring thanks Metro North Railroad for agreeing to postpone opening the breakneck ridge station to, to the public at least until late May. And be it further resolved that the Village of Cold Spring requires that Metro North Railroad. Uh, excuse me, requests that Metro North Railroad further postpone opening the breakneck ridge station to the public. Until such time as the Hudson Highland Fuhrer Trail infrastructure at the station and on the trails is at least partially functioning. This is a roll call vote, do we have the clerk? Okay, trustee Curdo is absent, trustee Fatty.
I vote aye.
I vote aye.
Trustee Starbuck?
Aye.
Trustee Woods?
Aye.
And I vote aye. Resolution adopted for twenty seven. Okay. The next is more of an announcement. We have volunteers for co-chairs for Community Day, Jill Golden and Kathy Lim, who have been volunteers for many years on community events and particularly Community Day, have agreed to take the helm together. So I'm pleased to announce that. And we are looking at Labor Day weekend, Saturday with Rain Day on Sunday. We are looking for folks to work under Jill and Kathy. And I would like to ask this board if you would support taking out ads in the current and the PCNR in addition to our social media inquiries.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good idea.
Great. And I'm, I'm so pleased that, that they've stepped up. Okay, so we'll have, we'll work with Jeff to get those run. And maybe, Liza, if you have time to assist with the graphic, that'd be awesome. Thank you. Okay, update on the ad hoc committee on police reform. Unfortunately, Chairman Ed Curley needed to step, step down to deal with some of his own health issues. I am pleased that member Victor Burgos has agreed to take the helm as chair. And they are continuing their review of the community survey and preparing recommendations for the trustees. And also, they have been making their way through the draft policies that Officer in Charge Burke has prepared to date. So their, their goal has been to make recommendations to us by the end of June. They'll let us know if they need to make timeline modifications. Any discussion?
Are we gonna get it all in one chunk, or we get all updated in pieces? I know they're reviewing in, in small pieces.
I, I think that they will do, my, my understanding of their process is that they're gonna make survey recommendations and then I don't know exactly how they plan to break up policy recommendations. It's really whatever they feel comfortable with. They have about thirty in front of them. A lot of them are tiny chapters, whatever they, way they'd like to give them to us to review. Do you have a preference?
I think smaller chunks would be helpful.
Along the way, sure. We will pass that along. Last is a request by the Montessori School to use the bandstand on April twenty ninth for Earth Day. I have asked that the, the fee to use the bandstand for an event be waived. They're only going to be onsite for about half an hour with kids and families. So I move that we approve the fee-free use of the bandstand by the founder of Montessori School on Friday, April twenty ninth, from ten fifteen to ten forty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. That's the end of our business. We still have a couple members of the public on. Just the public wish to make comment or ask questions?
Yeah, I had one question. It's Matt Francisco.
Hi, Matt.
Hello. The, for the parking arrangement for forty May, the fee that was twenty-five thousand dollars annually.
Yes.
Can you, can you help me understand how that was calculated? That it does not appear to be at a meter rate. It appears to be probably sixty percent less than the meter rate.
Yes, so we began at a we began requesting, I believe it was forty-nine thousand, which was a straight hourly rate. I'm sorry, we started with that number and then looked at a, at a discount of twenty percent, began from there. And then this was the middle ground that we reached.
Okay, and so I, it's four days, fifty-two weeks, twenty vehicles would be roughly six, well, would be sixty-two thousand four hundred. Right? Okay.
Right, and we also did, Matt, we did, we did comparables with the lot on Main Street for Ming Moon, the monthly rate of Ming Moon as a comparable, and also looked at the Hudson House as a comparable. And recognizing these spaces are a bit further from Main Street than, obviously than Ming Moon.
Okay, very good. Thanks.
Thank you. Good luck with that, with wrapping it up.
Thanks.
Any other comment or question from the public? Okay, seeing none, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Good night. Thank you.
Night.